Good evening. I'd like to call the May 2nd Planning Board Meeting to Order. We have no minutes this evening, so, and we have no approval not required. Is that correct? Nothing's come in?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. So, the first item on tonight's agenda is a Planning Board discussion and decision on the applicant is Bogosian Development LLC, and because of my ongoing relationship with the company, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. So, we need a motion.
Okay. April 28th, 2017 draft. Motion. The Planning Board vote to approve the application of under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a planned entirely proposed site plans, nine sheets dated March 3rd, 2017, revised April 4th, 2017, scale as noted, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, together with an architectural elevations and floor plans entitled Preliminary Design, six sheets dated March 11th, 2017, scale as shown, prepared by Longfellow Design with the following findings and conditions. Findings. The applicant proposes to construct a mixed-use building with parking at the property located at 587 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass., map number 47B0401500, as well as parking to be developed at 17 Nye Road and 19 Nye Road. Map numbers 47B04016001 and 47B04016002. The building will consist of three commercial units on the ground floor and three residential units on the upper levels. The two existing dwellings located at 17 Nye Road and 19 Nye Road are to remain. The parcel at 587 Main Street is owned business redevelopment, BR, and the parcels located at 17 Nye Road and 19 Nye Road are owned business, too, V2. Three lots will be merged prior to applying for a building permit. The project is a mixed-use development served by public sidewalks and public transportation; therefore, no traffic mitigation shall be required. The Planning Board has reviewed the plans referenced above and finds the architectural elevations and landscaping appropriate for this area's setting. Regards to the overall site plan, the applicant's attention is directed to the Water Department's referral dated April 12th, 2017. The applicant will need to prepare a plan that conforms to Water Department standards and submit separately to the Water Department for review and approval. The applicant will also need to apply separately to the Water Department, or to the Department of Public Works as referenced in the Water Department's referral. Otherwise, the Board finds the overall site design acceptable. Conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240, 183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, the proposed restaurant will be limited to a Class 1 or Class 2 with no more than 22 seats. Three, evergreen screening shall be planted between the proposed parking lot and the existing dwelling located at 17 Nye Road. Four, vehicles exiting the parking lot serving the restaurant shall be restricted to left-hand exits only. The parking lot serving 17 and 19 Nye Road shall be restricted to residential parking only. Parking special permit is required for the 15% reduction shown.
Is there a second?
Justice Scrivener's error on the sentence of the motion should be the application of Bogosian Development LLC.
Okay.
For your motion.
First line.
Oh, first line.
Application of, comma.
Oh, okay, of. Yeah, I thought that was kind of weird.
Yeah, it was weird.
It was like, did I skip over? So, Bogosian...
The curse of the word processor. Bogosian Development LLC.
Bogosian Development LLC.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Just a couple of things about the parking I want to get clear. Number four on the condition, vehicles exiting the parking lot serving the restaurant shall be restricted to left-hand turns only. So, that's the parking directly behind the building. Okay, so we talked about that. And the parking lot serving 17 and 19 Nye Road shall be restricted to residential parking only. Okay, because there was, the prior applicant for this property, we changed that to left-hand turn only out of the residence, and somebody at the hearing mentioned that, and I was thinking about it, but if you live there...
Right.
You don't want to have to be going, driven out to Main Street, so I'm glad to see that there is no restriction on number five, which I was going to mention that.
Any other discussion on this? Yep, Pam?
Because there is no restaurant as of yet...
Right.
And this is very explicit, exiting vehicles the parking lot serving the restaurant shall be restricted to left turns only. What if there is no restaurant?
I would, I would move to modify that, the restaurant, to read the commercial business on the first floor of the structure, or the building.
I'd second that. I think it needs clarification.
Yeah, I do, too, because it just, it could leave, it could leave you hanging.
Now, which or something?
This is number four?
Okay.
Where it says the restaurant, and Mark, what did you say the...
I would say, number four would read vehicles exiting the parking lot serving the commercial enterprise, because it is going to be a commercial...
Entity?
Yeah.
A commercial entity?
Entity, shall be restricted to left-hand turns only.
Okay.
Okay. Bob, do you accept that?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my only comment.
My comment on this would be...
We have to handle that as another motion, is that? Is that what you're...? No, okay, I didn't think so if he accepted it. Okay.
With regard to the last sentence of the findings of the first paragraph where it says, "No traffic mitigation shall be required," well, isn't number four, I mean, just so we gather some parity, isn't number four a traffic mitigation measure?
No, because traffic mitigation, the way we've always looked at it and dealt with it, has to do with, we'll put bicycle racks there, or we'll make sure that there's a bus stop right there, so that you cut down the number of trips, vehicle trips.
So, it doesn't have anything to do with, traffic mitigation doesn't have anything to do with directing or redirecting traffic?
No.
Well, it's interesting, yeah, because the way it's phrased, "The project is a mixed-use development served by public sidewalks and public trans-" therefore, no traffic mitigation shall be required." And it doesn't necessarily tie into serve by sidewalks and public transportation? I mean, I see what Mark is saying. It's strange.
Brian, I would like you to explain that.
Traffic mitigation is all about taking 20% of your trips, and you generate a summer peak hour, and somehow reducing them, either through car pools, or I think people have bicycles, other modes of transportation, take the bus, walk. Because there is public transportation there, there are sidewalks, and this is an area where you want mixed-use development, the Board doesn't feel compelled to have a such a vehicle trip reduction measures incorporated into the decision.
Right.
Okay.
But turning movements, same number of vehicles, but just how they turn is within your site plan per view.
Then it's not categorized as traffic mitigation. Okay?
Okay.
Just a bit of clarification, that was good. And so, my last comment would be number five, the condition number five, shall be, let's see, the parking lot serving 17, 19 Nye Road shall be restricted to residential parking only. I get that, but should we specify, and I'm just throwing it out to the Board, specify that they're not under the restriction, or is the absence of a left or right-hand turn in that condition enough to say they're going to have access to turn left or right?
Because there are two parking lots there, and this one is restricted to residential, and the other one is restricted to the commercial entity, and it says that one shall have left turn only. I think that's definitive enough.
That's enough. Okay, all right.
Does, do you have any...
So, what I take from that is even the residences above the commercial businesses will be parking there. Yeah, so...
That was the plan. Yeah. So, it would be, so residential, are you both okay with that?
We're fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other comments, questions? John?
I just want to clarify, condition number two, regarding the 22 seats, that that includes the indoor or outdoor seating? Both, it includes both, right?
It's the indoor seating, I believe, but Brian, does that include the outdoor, too? Because people can just pop a table out there.
Twenty-two seats, indoor or outdoor.
Twenty-two, period, indoor or outdoor. Should...
Total.
Yeah.
Total.
And that, and one more comment. So, you know, piggybacking on what Pam has exposed, I would suggest number two to read, if a restaurant is proposed, it will be limited to...
Or if it's built, or if it's...
Well, right now, because, I mean...
Yeah, I see what you're...
A restaurant is kind of like, yeah, it's a possibility, but it's not necessarily... But if, if it in fact is going to be proposed in the future, that's when that would come into play, that, that condition has amended as far as the phraseology.
So, it would be if a restaurant is proposed, it will be limited to?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Actually, there wasn't a restaurant proposed in the application. It was kind of iffy.
Yeah.
They didn't know.
Okay.
Can you repeat, so I understand?
If a restaurant is proposed, comma, it will be limited to a Class 1 or Class 2 with no more than 22 seats.
The plans show a restaurant on your...
Right, that's what I said. There is a proposed...
Testimony was that they didn't know.
It's okay, but it's okay. Listen, you finish. The plans show a proposed restaurant, so that's what's on your plans.
So, we have to refer to that?
So, refer to your plans, regardless of what you might have heard, what you have in front of you is a proposed restaurant.
Okay.
And you're making sure that if it, if it is constructed, it will be a Class 1 or a Class 2 restaurant with no more than 22 seats on site.
Okay, so that one stays as it was?
Well, I would, because the plans depict a restaurant, and the parking calculations are about a restaurant, we accept that application. We say, okay, the restaurant is proposed. There, absent a special permit, it has to be a Class 1 or a Class 2. It would be up to the Board of Appeals and its judgment to a class 3, like a D'Angelo's or something like that. So, condition two, the proposed restaurant that is shown on the plans...
Referring to the plans.
Referring to the plans, right. Not what was testified here.
Okay, that makes sense to me. So, I retract my amendment.
But it's, a good thing to put out, to add, would be no more than 22 seats, whether indoors or outdoors.
Or onsite.
Or onsite.
Whether, no more than 22 seats onsite?
Onsite.
Okay. So, we have multiple changes in this, and Bob, let me read them over so that you can see whether you can concur with them. Okay. Number one is the same as it was. This is all under conditions. Well, and then Brian, Scrivener's error, Bogosian Development LLC, at the very top.
Let's just make sure to read this.
Okay, and number two has been changed. It reads the same, except after 22 seats, words onsite. Number three is the way it is. Number four is, instead of restaurant, we have the commercial entity. So, we've got, what, three changes in here? And do you concur with all of those changes, Bob, in your motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion, it's been seconded, and Bob concurs with the changes to the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Obviously, no opposed. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for coming with a nice plan. Good luck, good plan.
A lot more good plans coming your way.
Good.
More plans coming.
Would you like to give his attention?
Brian.
Got through that one. There might be a disclosure of some sort. Talk about it after the meeting, and we'll give you a call.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is FWG LLC Site Plan Review Application to Construct 80 Units of Commercial Accommodations in...
Skip.
Skip? Oh, same thing. Special permit, FWG LLC Special Permit, Definitive Plan Application to Create 28 Lot Planned Residential Subdivision Located at 125 Falmouth Woods. Holmes and McGrath, the engineer. So, Brian, are you going to walk us through the changes on this?
We sure will try.
That's the attitude.
We're going to do two things. First, the special permit.
Yes, first, first is the special permit, definitive plan decision. So, let me just walk the Board through the changes that you'll see on your plans and in your packages. We've had a lot of paper flying around last, 24 hours, 48 hours. So, in your package, you're going to have four handouts. First handout is an email from Steve Rafferty. I'll speak to this a bit later. It talks about the fire engineers report and his expectations with regards to the issuance of a system design permit for the water system. You'll also see in your package tonight, a referral from the town engineer. It's dated May the 1st. It's the second referral you have received. You saw the first referral at your public hearing as a Board, together with a response to that referral from Holmes and McGrath dated May 1st. That goes into a great deal of engineering detail. You'll also find a homework sheet from me. The homework sheet is the findings that you will have to make as part of this decision under the PRD bylaw, and the findings that you will, you will need to make on the definitive plan under your rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land. You don't have to do this tonight. I will draft a motion on your behalf for your discussion next week and decision next week, but take a look at these at your convenience. Very briefly, Section 122A through G, the Board must find four of the purposes have been satisfied for the issuance of the special permit for a planned residential development. You must find that there are 10 acres in AGAA zoning district. You must find what the use thus proposed is allowed, it's a single family. That part of the open space is utilizing a recreational use under its general law, 16B, that's a tax abatement for recreational type uses. In this case, it's a golf course, driving range. You must find that under a preliminary plan, grid subdivision, you know, the density comports with the permit that you might issue. You find the setbacks are in keeping of, with the open space requirements of 25, perimeter from the lots, the perimeter of the site and the lots and the rooms. Area with frontage as depicted, there is a sufficient amount of open space, and that the open space that has been provided has been conveyed to a not-for-profit. I am going to work on a decision that incorporates the somewhat unique and distinct, the distinction here is that I think this is the first planned residential development that's also a development of regional impact. So, the timing might be off, the sequences may be off, but the result is the same. And also, so the findings you will make with regards to how the open space came into being off-site, and how it's now a, has a restriction on it, and is under the auspices of the 300 Committee. You'll have to make findings with regards to the covenants and restrictions of the homeowners association, and any use that's in the open space needs your permission, and that's the golf cart crossing through the open space and on Golf Cart Road, or whatever that road is. You'll need to find that the nitrogen bylaw has been satisfied. You may want to take a look at the fact that it's a groundwater discharge permit through DEP and the Kipcot Commission issued a DRI decision. It's in the Coast Guard Search and Rescue Corridor. I don't recall seeing anything over 100 feet, so you can find that it supports with that. And then the Board will need to find that, under subdivision control law, in your rules and regulations, that the utilities are suitable, that drainage is suitable as per these referrals that you have in front of you, and that the waivers that you might grant, and I believe there's only one, comports with your earlier preliminary recommendations, that waiver is a width of the right of one. It's from 44 to 34 feet. So, keep those things in mind as you look through this, these plans and all the paper that you have, that those are the findings, this little cheat sheet, that you need, you need to make. So, the plans that are in front of you, we just go through those changes for you. So, you see on the definitive plan, you can pop that right off, Pam. You can prove that, for an exciting venture. So, you'll see, the first set of plans you have is the definitive plan of land. It's composed, comprised of three sheets. Sheet number two, it's called the lotting plan. One of the requirements in the staff report, and it has been applied with now, is it shows the 75-foot lot width circles, and that was delivered the other day, I think, on Friday or, was delivered on time before Monday, closed the business. When you look at the decision that's going to come your way, also, there's a landscape plan, two plans up. The landscape plan, when you make your decision, is for the street trees only. I know, there's lots of... Is that, I'm sorry, that's the grid subdivision plan? That's next, I'm sorry. You'll see that there's, there's the grid subdivision plan that shows the 33 lots.
Mm-hmm.
So, you'll also, a part of your findings, right, that's the definitive plan. Go back. You got thoughts? That's the 75-foot lot circles?
That's the 75.
Right.
This way.
That's changed from the first hearing.
Yeah.
That has not changed from the first hearing, that sheet?
This sheet has not.
That's, that sheet has not changed from the first hearing. That's that...
That's 28.
Exhibit plan for your grid subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
You received some plans, landscape plans, the landscape plan that will appear in your draft motion, which is going to only refer to the street trees. Although you received elevations and other landscape plans, the planned residential development bylaw doesn't allow you to look at single-family homes. It only allows you to look at structures of three dwelling units or more, multifamily. So, when you look at these plans, think about the street trees that are depicted. You won't be getting into the elevations of the single-family homes or the landscaping on the lots, because the bylaw excludes you from doing so, even though they presented it for your information.
Is it 305, 21?
This is all, this is all planned residential development right now, special permission. You get to look at multifamily dwellings. Air Park Subdivision in Lakewood had quadplexes. We reviewed them, essentially, as a multifamily development. Fairway Point Condominiums, I believe, has two and, and three-family unit buildings. So, Fairway Point Condominiums, just to the south of this, was reviewed back in the 90s, we took a look at their landscaping and wondered because they were multifamily buildings. These are single-family dwellings, and the bylaw does not allow the Planning Board to condition its approval based on those plans, because, you know, what you are allowed to look at and require street trees, both as a planned residential development and under your subdivision rules and regulations. So, that's why you don't see the elevations.
No design review either on this one.
Correct. That's why you don't see those plans in your package.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, your roadway construction drawings. You will see on sheets two through five, the highlighted areas will show you the changes that were made. See on the revision block in the lower right-hand corner?
Yes.
Those are the revisions that were made in response to Mr. McLaughlin's May 1st referral and the response from Holmes and McGrath. Essentially, that's their visual depiction of the letter that you received. So, when you go through the plans, you'll see revised May 1st, in those revision blocks, on those three sheets, two, three, four and five, four sheets, will detail the changes made. I wouldn't fret too much over them at this point. The engineers seem to be in relative agreement that what will be constructed, the drainage will remain on-site, we won't invade a public way or cross property boundaries. We could sort of get into the minutia and the weeds, but for the Planning Board's purposes, I believe you're in good shape here. So, those are the changes, and if you have any questions, ask me. If I don't know the answer...
Mr. Chair, oh.
I'll ask Mr. McGrath, if we're all here. The Isaac Cox are here to answer any questions I may pump up. But if any concerns or questions or conditions of approval, that's the time to discuss.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, to staff. Does this eliminate one of the waiver requests or the concerns requested specifically to the roadway construction drawings? Does it eliminate the concern of the 150-foot radius? So, that'll eliminate. That was my... Thank you.
The only, the only waiver that we're really getting into is the 44 to 34. And what to your preliminary decision with regards to that?
A question. When I look at sheet number, it doesn't have a number on it, the definitive plan, it shows the layout of the 32 lots.
This is for the grid plan?
For the grid plan. Then, when I turn to the sheet, road construction plans, the first one, it has a picture, well, it has a layout of where, I think is where the grid plan was going to be if it was to be approved. So, does this whole area become part of their open space for the planned residential development?
You weren't on the Board when we did this preliminary date. They...
Yes, I was.
Were you? Okay, they, remember, their, their open space is on another site.
Part of it.
The significant part of it is...
I understand that.
Offsite. Offsite.
Part of the decision will be, you'll find that there's onsite open space and offsite open space. There's also that part of the golf course, which is, I believe, some 87 acres, which is part of this application, but not part of the designated open space. They, I understand is that they've agreed to put a restriction on the 8.57 acres, that's onsite, and that there is a parcel of property offsite. I should have actually brought that, sorry, I didn't bring the recorded plans here, but you had that as part of your first hearing process that shows that portion of the shallow pond, the dario, so-called dario parcel, and that 18-plus acres that was purchased and then donated to the 300 Committee as offsite space. That fulfills the conditions of section. I'm sorry. You can look to section 240-129 in your sheet, and section 130A conveyed to 300 Committee to find whether or not the 8.57 on and the 18-something acres off satisfies those two sections. But the rest of the golf course, it's just that the golf course, and with your permission, Jim, Staff Advisor, whether the proposal is to restrict the golf course, the non-designated open space area of the golf course in perpetuity and there's some sort of other restriction.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Please step up. This one does need a little clarification.
Yeah, it's just a kind of a complicated one.
For the record, Liza Cox, an attorney with Heather McConan and Fish and Hyannis. I think what we would talk, we would do with the remaining land, so not the 8.57 acres that we provided a draft covenant for you on, but that the remaining land, the 81 acres, would be subject to your decision, this decision of the planning board. So, that land couldn't be used, for example, for another project because it would be part of the Lot B, which is used to calculate the grid subdivision. We weren't proposing a separate restriction on that land, but, I mean, if that's something that the board felt strongly about, we could do that. It would be subject to your decision, though, and that decision would be recorded with the Registry of Deeds. So, there would be something in the title showing that that land is subject to this decision.
Thank you.
So, in your decision, you might have something, you know, the plans are to be constructed as approved and modification requires return to the board. So, that area would be.
So, the area that's shown on this plan, they're wanting to have it as a restriction.
Subject to your, subject to your further review, because the density calculation is based on that space. Doesn't mean they can't come back. In other words, let's say, just for the sake of argument, they only build 16 homes. They may want to come back and do something. It's subject to your review.
Well, also, for the sake of argument, there is a lot of land that there has golf course holes on it that aren't on this plan, and that also could be coming back at some point as a residential development, either from this current owner or from some future owner.
Correct.
And that's why I asked the question.
Got it, and I think I have the language to condition your approval appropriate.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
This is the plan we're talking about, this outline here.
Yeah.
I hope so. It includes everything we see inside these dark lines.
Right, right, so that's the plan.
You can't use the same thing as that twice.
Yeah, it's three sheets. You don't, we won't see this in another plan coming in from a different angle with the big, coming across the same place.
Those are the three sheets to look at, the landscape plan, the grid plan, the roadway profiles and drainage schemes if you really want to. And we'll go from there. So, with that, hopefully now, those are the plans in front of you, that's what you're going to be discussing, and if you have any concerns or conditions for me to listen to for part of your motion, now's the time.
I have two concerns. One, there is a pathway that kind of meanders through all the holes in the golf course and connects with the wildlife quarter. I don't know if that's a necessity or not, but I don't agree with the assessment that one can walk through the golf course at any time on this pathway and not want to run the risk of being conked in the head. And so, I think I would feel a lot more comfortable since that pathway was presented to us if we say we neither endorse it or don't endorse it as a connection, unless we have to for some reason.
Was it actually proposed to connect to the wildlife?
Mm-hmm. It was.
I thought the wildlife was for the wildlife to go up and down, not for humans to go up.
But it was for the humans to go from point A to point B.
Yeah. And so, I, because it was presented to us, and because if we endorse the plan as it was presented to us, I'm concerned that it be construed that we put our blessing on a pathway through the golf course. I'm not a golfer, but I feel uncomfortable about that.
You just have to wear orange clothing.
I'd wear a helmet.
I think, I mean.
First of all, I'd like to see what plan this shows on.
It's on one of these.
It showed on the previous plan.
I think that's part of your plan review for this, like.
Okay.
Oh, am I looking at that?
Yep, the wrong one, right. That would explain why I'm not on the same page here.
Because we found it on this one.
Yeah. Next.
But this definitely, I think, under definitive plan, would need to have a concern about the water supply, because I don't think that would be under site plan review, or would it for the 80? It's kind of a combination of the two, really.
Right, well, right now, the plan, the site plan review is over here. We're in subdivision world and plan and residential development world. We're in special permit world and definitive plan world. Site plan world is over here somewhere. So, you need to make a finding with regards to the adequacy of utilities as part of your special permit decision.
And that's why I'm bringing this up now, because it says findings for definitive plan.
And as part of your definitive plan also, you find that the utilities to be installed are suitable and adequate. That's part of your decision here, and you need to look to the plans and the referrals from the engineers in order to do that. If, in fact, at this point in time, you wanted additional conditions written into your decision with regards to water, the adequacy of the supply and the adequacy of the fire protection. This is the time to say.
That's what I want.
You want some condition that states that.
That this will be sent to the, to Steve Rapperty.
Okay, we have here?
Yeah, but we have to put it in part of our condition, that we need to have the water department, Steve Rapperty, agree officially that there will be sufficient water for fire suppression. I mean, we can't do anything about whether the individual units have sufficient water pressure to reach the second floor, but there does, from the town's standpoint, have to be sufficient for fighting fires. And my concern is that.
I thought this letter addressed that.
I would draw your attention to the last paragraph.
Right, right there.
Where it says, "We fully expect subject to detailed," and so, so there's a, there's a additional oversight process that's going to take place. Subject to detailed water system design review, comments and resolution of any such comments. So, if you want to reiterate via a condition, I wouldn't have any problem with it, but I think it's pretty spelled out in that last paragraph.
And that's fine, but I think we need to be definitive about it, because I know from years past, there have been water pressure issues.
Oh, I, I understand that.
And so, I, I think it should be part of our decision.
Okay.
All right, so, absent approval from the Falmouth Department of Public Works Water Division, you gotta come back and see the board. Is what I'm hearing.
Sounds like a good condition.
Okay. Got it.
Any more comments on the definitive plan? So, we'll leave the discussion open, we'll address it again in the next meeting?
Yeah, what I'll do now is I'll put together a draft motion for the board for next week with your findings, and then the conditions based on those findings and the waivers that you may grant as part of this joint decision, Plan of Residential Development, definitive plan. Just familiarize yourself with those sections here, and I'll add a condition, no further development or subdivision, absent a modification of your decision, and a condition that absent a water department approval of the system as proposed in the plans, come back and see the board for a modification of the decision. Got it? See, this stuff is easy.
It was well laid out for us.
All right. And we'll see you next week. Now, Mark won't be with us next week, so if you have any comments, just come right to me. I'll try to get you a copy of the decision.
Will come.
And we'll do that.
Thank you.
Next is FWG LLC, site plan review application to construct 80 units of commercial accommodations in 10 standalone structures. Replace existing pool and fitness center, expand parking at 125 Falmouth Woods.
So, one of the issues that came up, this is a site plan review, so it's just an administrative review, it's not a public hearing. One of the issues that came up was the ability of the applicant to take advantage of a parking reduction, because our zoning bylaw, 1926 through 2017. That's where I'd work with that. In my conversation with the building commissioner, he sees that, yes, you could have apartment hotel was a use allowed back in the 50s and 60s, that would be a residential use, but you can also have a hotel, motel for transient use, which is more of a business. So, it's, his guidance at this point is that they're eligible. They would still need to go see the Board of Appeals as part of their special permit process anyhow, but I know that came up as an issue last week, and that's the guidance at this point. It can be both fish or foul, and take advantage of either, either as residential in nature, not so much business in nature, they can at least apply, you have threshold access to the board.
Which one gets the benefit of the reduction, the residential or the commercial?
Commercial. Because this is more commercial accommodations.
Seasonal, basically, yeah.
Seasonal, transient. They have threshold access to the board, appeals, or the special.
Jim?
Okay.
How many?
Yes?
I was the one that was kind of, I don't know if anybody else did, but Brian was very good in explaining. However, in that explanation, and he thought it worth, or at least I thought that it was worth bringing up, that when it does go in front of the zoning board of appeals, potentially there'll be a modification of their parking special permit or a portion of the special parking, or special permit per parking. But because the applicant has identified and is meeting the requirement of 88 parking spots for the hotel, I would like to have the board consider signage be conditioned that those 88 parking spots be reserved for hotel patrons only. The thought process behind that is shared peak times are similar in both the residential and the commercial, and so as not to make more difficult parking for the hotel patrons, you designate, instead of going out to either the, the grass parking or using the business parking.
I don't know, I've played golf here with 300 people before in big events, and it fills up, and to have, can't park here, can't park there, it's usually first come, first served. Ones that get there really in golf take the good parking spots, that's the way of life of a golf course, and just have signs saying, golfers can't do it, they have to park over here, this is only for people, and I think the people staying in the cottages are going to be golfers.
But I think you're looking at it from the standpoint of the same thing. It's not, you have hotel now or proposed, you have an existing, which your experience is from, golf course. First come, first served, if that were the case, would put the, potentially put the hotel patrons playing second fiddle, and I wouldn't want that as a planning board member. A hotel patron comes, pays his, his fees to have the accommodations of a hotel, not to be parking in a, you know, the grass 49 area or whatever, but that would be my preference. They've, they've identified 88 parking spaces per 240-108. They've met that, so one step beyond that to ensure would be signage that designates hotel patrons only for the 88. That would be my condition.
I myself don't feel it's necessary, think it's too much, but we'll have everybody else discuss it and we'll have a vote.
Because there is parking in the, in front of all the buildings, so I would think if you're staying here, you'd be parking here, and it might be overflow for there, so.
I think these are the 88, he said that these, he wants to mark these.
These are the 88?
Yeah.
Yes.
He wants to mark this for hotel guests only and not for golfers.
I thought it was both, I thought this.
No.
The total was 88, here and there.
No, I think this, I think I saw the 88 coming.
The total was 281.
Okay.
88 of which is.
Okay.
They've met the 240-108 requirement for hotel.
Because the potential is that there could be a wedding there, and there could be guests coming in, and if the golfers have taken up all of those spots for the hotel, then they have no place to park, and if you're saying it's first come, first served, you know?
No, I, I've been to this place where there's 300 events, and they have parking people out there, they say, "You park over here today," they control it, you know, they, you let them, I think we should let them manage the parking and not tell them how to do it with signs. I think that's going too far.
Well, my.
It's just my opinion, we're gonna.
So, that would be, your exposure and your experience hasn't included a hotel, so.
But I look at it as you have a management organization that's going to manage their property, that's going to take care of that. So, if they're running an event, they would manage that. I don't see where we have to manage their events and their parking. If, if they're meeting the requirement for the number of spaces, so be it, how they use them is up to them.
These places could be empty, September, October, November, and we're gonna have no parking signs in front of them.
And if resident in Cottage 10 doesn't have a spot, he complains to them, not to us.
So, just for argument's sake, I'm. So just for argument's sake, I'm kind of curious then, with that argument, what good is 24108, which is minimum parking requirements, which is, in this case, and they're happy to go 88? I'm just saying, they've identified 88, let's go one step further and declare them parking for the hotel only. Would be, you'd, not only, what I believe is a good idea, but also you gain parity with the existing bylaw.
My feeling is that they have identified them, they've shown them on the plan, they do exist, and I also agree with what Bob is saying, that they're gonna manage this property so that their guests are treated better than somebody come for a one-time golf event. They're gonna manage this property, they've done everything else very well there, I would have no doubt that they'll do the same with the parking. And like the chairman said, have signs put there, and then no one's in the building, and other people can't park there because there's a sign there, or they feel unwanted. I don't think that's necessary. They've identified the parking spots, they've shown them on the plan, in my opinion, they've met the guidelines. I wouldn't support that, so...
I don't support that restriction either, I think they can add it of their own volition if it becomes necessary at any point in time. It's just like, okay, town hall had to put restricted for town hall parking here when nobody could find a place to park, but because they are going to manage this, should it become necessary in the future? They certainly can post that for hotel guests only. So I don't support that.
They may actually want to do that, they may decide to do that during the summer months when it's basically booked, and then remove that during the fall, but I mean, I think you're right, I think they have a management plan, and I'm sure they've thought this out, so...
So would you need to vote it, Mark, or you withdraw?
No, I'll withdraw.
There's no motion on this?
On the floor, this is just for my guidance, couldn't we?
Guidance, okay. Well, we would have voted on it sooner or later, but it looks like...
Right now, my sense is, county knows, so I'm not gonna put it in the decision. The next issue, I think, was the path issue.
Yeah. I still have the same issue under this.
Now, where is it?
The path.
I remember seeing it in the preliminary file, there it is.
Okay, and it goes all the way up, through...
Actually, it avoids the golf course.
It goes kind of through all the different holes.
Doesn't, these, these holes go over this way.
Well, you have to look at the other...
I know, I think it avoids them, mostly. There, there's no cross-play this way.
It's not, okay.
You never hit a cricket ball?
Well, the, let's see, if I, they moved it, I, believe me, with the old driving range, shouldn't be hitting the old houses here.
That's my point.
But they moved everything, but it's...
I'm telling you, they proposed that it is safe for people to walk through there at any point in time.
That's what they did say.
Yes, but I think if we endorse that claim, it's not something we necessarily want to endorse unless there are nice high fences all along that path, that it is safe at any time.
Unless you stipulate signage saying, enter at your own risk.
Could do that.
Because I like the concept of natural, somewhat natural walking paths that connect aspects of Almus natural beauty. And if it happens to go through a golf course, even better, because golf courses are beautiful.
Mark, I'm not arguing with that, I'm just saying, it's on our plan.
Look at this, I want to show you, see this? This is a fence to protect it, all the way here. Driving range with high net fence to protect it. And this is the road on the other side, so it's the, it's really getting all, it's all the way out there. I think they have done a pretty good job.
They all let it go.
I think that's what I'm reading, and this is being proposed 50-foot netting?
That's the driveway.
That's, that's to protect the people walking from the driving range that you're concerned about.
Well, it goes all the way through.
It goes, the proposed netting goes all the way through.
Yeah, to there.
I think you might be thinking of the first time we saw this, where it was jumping, it was going through.
Yeah.
And it was going from islands of woods, and...
It's a different plan.
But this is, this is different.
The other one snuck through the whole thing all the way like this.
Okay, if you all consider it safe, I won't voice any further concern. I don't golf. Thank heaven.
We'll just put netting around you, and you won't.
No, they have those bubble suits now.
That sounds good.
Shark suits.
Could we get a clarification from?
Sure. What do we need?
Well, just to make sure that this is the path and that the netting is going.
Well, I think it says, proposed netting 50 feet and walk path.
Yeah, but the walk path continues all the way up to the wildlife.
50 feet.
So I do have a question that maybe the applicant can add, or answer, that I, when you brought it up, Jim, last time, is it going to be open to the public? And they said yes, but is there going to be some sort of signage that at least directs public so as not to wander off looking elsewhere for, you know, unmarked path?
Maybe we have some kind of condition that the path be marked, shown on the plan.
Okay, you're not deciding it tonight, I'll go back and look at the plans. I'm hearing that the board wants some sort of management with regards to stay on the path, some signs, people caution hackers, enter at your own risk, something along those lines. So I'll think of something that, put into your motion for you, and I'll review the plans with the design team.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
No. We do, do design review on this, correct, on the structures?
Yes, now the commercial structures.
Right, the commercial structures, that's why we have detail, elevations further down, we'll get to that.
So your motion will be, you know, as per plans or whatever things you come up with in it?
So on the site, yes, John?
I have a couple of questions on the site plan. One is the stormwater drainage basin, probably Mr. McGrath can answer my question.
Yes, you want to ask it?
I'll ask you to...
Please step up to the mic, but ask your question.
It appears that the drainage basin is 210 feet long, approximately, 210 to 218.
Oh, this is for Holmes McGrath? Yes, the overall footprint of the basin is 210 by 20.
And the depth?
The above ground, above surface, it's about a foot and a half.
So the basin's only about a foot and a half feet deep?
Yes.
And have, do you have an idea what the soil conditions are? Because it's there to drain properly, correct?
Right, but it also has a subsurface component.
So it has...
So it's a basin, but underneath, there's a subsurface component.
A leaching area.
Leaching area.
Okay. And then I have a question about the RUC system. There we go. That might be Mr. McGrath.
This is good.
My name is Micah McGrath, I'm a professional engineer at W. Holmes McGrath.
So I have, it shows a bottomless GPC filter, four of them? What exactly is that, please? What does it mean by bottomless?
I have been doing this for a long time. When, when we discharge treated wastewater into the ground, we don't have, in the water, we don't have the right nitrogen, the carbon ratio, so we generate plumes in the groundwater, and they go miles from treatment plants. And what I've done is, I take the final treated effluent, and I add carbon back to it, and I put it into a special filter that's basically bottomless. So it's actually a soil absorption system, and by adding the carbon, I get much better treatment of the final effluent.
Okay. And does the RUC system, does it have above-ground filter, like air filter, does it discharge odors?
We have them at, the biggest one around here is at Atreya, and it does not smell.
Okay, so the residents could expect the same at this site, that it would be odorless?
I don't know of any that have smelled.
Okay.
To be blunt.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
What is the gallons per day of the system?
I have to look at the plan.
I just want to know how big it is, I just, I always judge them by gallons per day. I guess we could have counted bedrooms and done it that way, but...
No, it's substantial.
It's 32,000 gallons a day.
32,000 gallons a day?
Yes. What, what, Atreya is almost 40,000.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on the site plan? We can move on to design review.
Yeah.
So, looks like we got all four elevations, and even a space plan.
I think on some of them.
They got the rest. A little bit of detail here. Garage under.
I think there's one garage, it's not...
It's one.
I think it's a garage, the triple queen for the garage. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This indicates it looks to me like there's one garage for this entire unit.
That's what the...
Go over a page, go over a couple pages, and you'll get to a basement plan.
That's probably so just they could get access to the basement.
Basement plan.
Well, they get in and out, they're connected. See, it's a giant parking garage underneath all of it.
This is 789, unit 789.
Perhaps a design team can answer the question with regards to the use of the underground.
Kart storage.
Right.
That's typically what it is, yeah.
It's golf cart storage, it's two buildings that are connected underground, not connected above, and they're storing the golf carts.
Three, same as the woods hole.
Three buildings, I'm sorry.
So they don't have...
It goes in a managed memory, so it's three.
So they don't have garages?
It's access to the basement for golf cart storage.
Right, so they don't have garages.
No.
The second thing is the hearing, so, no, there's no garages.
Don't put them in any chronological order, what...
Why?
Closet, big. Is that a sauna?
We don't really care about the insides, nice they showed us. Not our purview.
Like your customer said.
Yeah, it's nice to know, but we're, on design review, we're taking a look at the outside structure and how it fits in our town and our neighborhood.
The gym, fitness center.
Nice looking fitness center.
Plenty of windows, plenty of detail. Roofing is architectural grade.
Yeah, getting fenestrated.
We have plenty of fenestrations, yeah.
I like the fitness center, it's nice looking. Am I reading that right, 24 feet?
2410.
2410.
Nice, nice.
And the bumpers.
It's my golf.
I got a question on sound. Micah, there's no smells, there's also no sound, like Deanite Systems usually have that one fan that's running pretty loud and cycles on and off, does this, not that it matters, this is just for you to understand your, this is a giant system, I've never seen one this big, it's a personal question.
There is, shown on the plan, are things called soil layer units. There are soil layer units on the Atreya, and they, they make a noise, but it's completely innocuous.
Yeah, I've been there a lot, I've never heard it.
But...
It's fine. I didn't know, I didn't know if these had it or not. You're saying it's the same as there.
So, Mr. Chairman, the design approved, there's apparently agreeable to the board, I can just write that in as per plans?
Yeah. Very good plan. I just, I was amazed at the size of the system. It's good.
I think it's great.
But the system is designed to be more than just a hotel.
Yes, that's what, yeah, it's gonna take the hotel, the operations, the guest rooms, the resident, that's why, yeah.
So essentially, what I'm looking at now is a motion as per plans, your usual standard conditioning comes back if they change anything, and you're looking at some sort of risk management along this path as it traverses through perhaps active driving range or tee box or whatnot. So I'll take a look for you.
And public marking saying, here's the start of the plan.
Stay on path, stay on the path, don't leave the path.
Okay, got it. So that's good for tonight, on this? So we'll have more, I think so.
I'll have these in the mail to you by the end of the week.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is municipal vulnerability program, grant application, letter of support.
Thank you. Hopefully you received, or should be in your package, an email that describes what this program is about, I don't have it on me at the moment, I'm going from memory, but what this grant program does, has two programs. But what this grant program does, there's two programs. There's this municipal vulnerability program, and this coastal resiliency program. We had been talking for a while about applying after the hazard plan is approved for a grant to do a more in-depth vulnerability assessment. Back in December, or thereabouts, the Commonwealth has decided that they would like to introduce this municipal vulnerability program where they would then fund towns to hire third-party vendors to help train them in these tabletop exercises about sea level rise and vulnerability assessments. Whoops, okay?
Yeah, it's such a big cramp in my leg.
Okay, it's just a cramp in your leg. Okay, we've had other medical emergencies in this room, making sure it's not a medical emergency.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, where was I?
Your third-party?
Oh, yes.
Municipal vulnerability.
Right. And the Commonwealth is somewhat urging us to apply for the municipal vulnerability program before we move forward with this coastal resiliency grant program for a more in-depth vulnerability assessment. As part of this request for responses, they're just looking for a response, who's interested. It's a very simple, one-page, seven-question response. Back to the Commonwealth, part of that package is, would be letters of support from Planning Board, Conservation Commission, other committees that are interested in coastal issues, resiliency issues, and vulnerability issues. So the request is due May 17th, which means they're physically in their hands up in Boston on that day. So my request to the Planning Board is at least a letter of support on behalf of the town, I guess the Board Selectmen's application, to the municipal vulnerability program to fund our initial assessment of critical infrastructure and to hire a third-party vendor, say someone like Cape Cod Commission or Woods Hole Group. There'll be a list of certified vendors that the state will produce. And that RFP, I believe, has already been issued, and they're in that process. So the bottom line is, a letter of support in response to this request for responses from the Commonwealth, part of their municipal vulnerability program, to get this project started.
Leslie, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Leslie Fields with Woods Hole Group. I think Brian did a great job of describing the program, and I would just urge the board to, you know, support the application to the Commonwealth because I think it's a great idea. Once you're accepted into the program and you're certified, it also then puts the town sort of ahead of other communities for future grant funding for programs to implement resiliency projects. This first year of the program, they are allowing communities to apply as, into this program, but also to apply for money through CZM for a more detailed vulnerability assessment. If the town chooses to do that, they can also do that as well. And I believe someone from Woods Hole Group came here about a year ago to talk about that vulnerability assessment.
Yep.
So that's another avenue. You can do both this first year if you want, so.
So you draft up a letter, Brian?
I do have a question for Brian.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Your explanation, thank you, I got a little lost on this letter that will be sent to, by selectmen to the state. Will it only capture municipal infrastructure or will it serve both infrastructure and coastal
This response is really to indicate to the Commonwealth that we are interested in hiring this third-party to come in and help us do this tabletop assessment of critical public infrastructure. It may be coastal, it may not be coastal, but it's essentially a first wash, first step towards the ultimate goal, which is this entire vulnerability assessment, which we will apply for from mass CZM, a little bit further down the road.
And that's separate?
That's separate, there's two programs. The guidance from the Commonwealth is that it's dubious we would finish the municipal vulnerability program in time to do the coastal resiliency grant. And they are hesitant to urge us to move forward, even though technically we can on both programs. So we have accepted their guidance for our future actions.
They basically want us to do our homework.
I'm just concerned with regard to the, I'm hearing there's going to be, one submittal of this letter will activate two potential funding streams depending on what third-party entities we choose.
No, it would be to hire this third-party entity to help us start this process of assessing our vulnerability, or tabletop exercises. The letter of support is only for this municipal vulnerability program and getting somewhere between $10,000 to $50,000 to hire a third-party contractor. It is not an application, that's a separate application, to the coastal resiliency program that's due June 7th. My sense is the decision is simply move forward with this vulnerability assessment.
So selectmen do this, we just send a support letter?
Support letter. There's nothing to preclude us from not relying upon a state grant to do the more detailed vulnerability assessment later on. So this is a good start. It might be that you might want to think about not relying upon grantor agencies for this type of very important work. And think about maybe what November town meeting would support in terms of, see, will be, the next RFP for CZM grants will be this time next year. We should be finished with this tabletop exercise vulnerability program for that. So some of the decision-making processes around here need to start focusing on other sources of revenue besides grain aid projects, especially when we're talking about something as important as resiliency and vulnerability. So, my cryptic sort of, you know, it might be that you locally fund this other project once you've finished with this vulnerability program. Something to think about.
Okay, you have something?
My concern, oh, go ahead, Brian. I don't want to interrupt.
Back to the immediate topic is that a motion to support the selectmen's response to the Commonwealth in support of the municipal vulnerability program would be, you know, the motion.
Okay, if I move that, then do I have to zip it after?
No, just get some on the table, so.
Okay, so I will move that we send the letter to the selectmen's boarding.
No, second.
Comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, the program, I'm sorry, were you?
No, no, I thought Pat was going to start.
No, because I want to do something a little different. I've already moved this. I think it's a wonderful thing, I read all the information that was sent.
Comments on the motion?
I support it, I think it's a terrific idea. I think you'd be foolish not to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, now further comment?
Go ahead.
Okay, my further comment is that we have a coastal resiliency element in our local comprehensive plan, and the selectmen have appointed a committee of five to pursue this and work towards it. My concern is that if we get this letter in and we are one of the communities chosen to participate, that this puts us another year behind if we wait until, as Brian said, the next funding period is this time next year for CZM in July. So I would like to see it done somewhat simultaneously, that the people who need to get trained receive the training under this request for proposal now, but that simultaneously, knowing that we'd have to go to town meeting to, I think, get the CZM, or no, that we could either apply for CZM funding or we can go to town meeting in November to get this. That will put us operational when the training is finished, instead of saying, okay, the training's done now, what are we going to do six months later?
Right.
I don't like that, I think the momentum needs to be there.
Okay, but this is a selectmen.
Doesn't matter. We can do things other than a selectmen.
Conceptually, I think it's, I think ideally, that's what we want to happen.
Yeah.
To work in, you know, tandem.
Yeah, I would think so.
So there's no lag time.
And my guess is you get the selectmen on board with this to, yes, get all the training, avail ourselves of the training, but then don't let it lag after the training and people change and you've lost it all.
No, but I think, I think it's going to be very energizing for people to be trained in a community and, you know, it sounds like a little bit of a train-the-trainer program, so that we'll have people on the ground here, and having the money to help is very positive. And then, it would just, I hope, just blend right into the coastal resiliency committee where they can then continue the work and more funding down the road.
Well, that was a question that I had of Brian, and he wasn't entirely sure, because staff has to be trained, and I know the committee of five will have to be trained, but we don't know how many will be involved in that training. Therefore, can, say, the planning board take part in that training as well? Or, we don't know at this point.
We don't know at this point. We'll find out.
There's a cost burden on town for training staff as well. That's what I read in the.
Well, the staff has to be committed to 80 hours.
Right.
That was their contribution to it, but the staff has to be trained along with.
Right, right.
Once, what happens is, once a ward's made, then that scope of work will be put together with the Commonwealth. And at that time, it will determine just, you know, who are the?
What the work.
Participants, okay.
Right now, my sense is, we'd like to be as inclusive and as possible, but it may be limited to, I don't know.
X number?
We'll find out.
Okay.
Okay, I don't see the purple folder here, so there's no?
I've decided, I've decided.
Too confusing.
If the purple folder isn't here, that means there's no mail.
Okay. Just checking.
Yep, no purple folder tonight.
So there's no general correspondence? Next item is future agenda items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
After the Affordable Housing Committee meeting this afternoon, Holly Wilson, I guess, had mentioned to you after our last meeting, or two meetings ago, about having a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee to talk about the LIP program and how the Planning Board could work with the Affordable Housing Committee. So I'm offering that as a possible discussion for a future agenda item.
I think I actually brought that up, about guidelines for LIPS was be a future agenda, and that's already on our lineup. Is that the same thing you're talking about?
Yeah, but the Affordable Housing Committee would like to be involved with that.
They'd like a joint meeting.
Like a joint meeting. Where the members could come to this.
Yeah, why don't we just invite them to our meeting and have them speak? I'd prefer to do that than.
That's fine.
When is it going to be on our agenda?
Yes, it'd be on our agenda. And they could present something. That sounds good.
Actually, we were hoping to understand the direction of the Planning Board with that regard. Your comment was well-received by the Affordable Housing Committee, and it's a viable concept to collaborate with the Affordable Housing Committee with regard to criteria, LIP criteria form, specific customized for FALMA. But they need further direction as to.
I'm going to bring it up again after elections, and we know who's actually going to be here. That's, this is one of the things I'd like to push out until afterwards. An idea that's in the works, it's been there for a long time, I think we're on the same page.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a thought on that. Maybe the Affordable Housing Committee can have conversations with, some people have actually used the LIP program to find out what they thought was good or not good, or where some improvements could be made. If they have anybody in their group that has experience.
The reason why I brought it up is, I was working with a developer and they told me they don't want to do the LIP, it's just another step, it just slows things down. I said, well, we're doing something wrong. So anyways, I think that's a good idea.
All feedbacks, good.
It's on our list.
We're beating this one hard.
It's on our list. What you may want to have as beforehand is really a little bit of a tutorial about what the LIP program even is.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. We could do it publicly on television and everyone could see it.
About what it's all about. It's been around a long, long time.
Right.
Used to be their hottest stuff.
Why don't we do that first? I would appreciate. Well, we could do it same night.
But I think a little, this is a football tutorial is good too.
Why don't we, that should be our joint, the meeting we have, we do that, first we have a tutorial and then we have comments from awards.
There you go.
Sound good?
It's on our list.
Sometime in May or June.
It's on our list.
Any other future agenda items? I had another one, but I don't remember.
Must have been pretty important.
Maybe it's that age thing, I guess.
With a lot of respect for Mr. Dryer's absence, I would move to a.
Wait, wait, we're not done yet.
We're not done?
Give me a second, you're jumping the gun.
He would do that.
Next meeting?
Next week.
Next week. And we're going to be dealing with basically this right now. Is there anything else big on this?
I believe these decisions, and we might pick up some of the future agenda item things that the board wants to do, didn't want to get into too many heavy things right before the election.
Right.
And then you can reorganize and get going right afterwards.
What's the, when days the election?
The 16th.
16th. Two weeks from today.
Right. So probably a pretty, fairly quick meeting next week, but these decisions will take some time. Pat?
I would like to thank Mark for his service to this board.
I enjoyed it.
I will miss his detailed line here, but I really thank you, Mark, for the time you spent on this board.
I enjoyed it sincerely as well.
And now you can come to the LCP meeting.
Absolutely.
And voting me and having your confidence, so it was, it was an experience. It was a good experience.
Oh, good, I'm glad you put the good before.
As opposed to it was an experience.
And I would recommend for the viewing audience at home that it's a worthwhile board to become involved in, whether you run for it or participate from the standpoint of the LCP subcommittee that's slowing down a little bit, but that's how I got involved and it lit my fire, and I'm glad I took the step on to the Planning Board, and thank you for voting me in back then.
Okay.
Okay. That's a big leap from the CBA.
So, good morning, make your last, for Paul.
I move we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.